In order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Happy Monday night, and it's, it is Lions Monday Night Football night, so I'll be wearing this after, well, I'll be wearing it later. Roll call vote, please.
We'll just roll call.
Sure, that too. Then we'll do the vote.
I vote on the roll call.
Sandy Kufel?
Here.
Krista Regan?
Here.
Kristy Hilton?
Here.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey?
Here.
Mark Bouchard?
Here.
Okay. Next, we have bills payable, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $503,807.8.
Support.
Have a motion of support, and why is it so high this, for these last two weeks? We had a $250,000 bond payment, refunding a bond, and that was for the upgrades of the water plant that we committed to in year 2000, and then 23,000 more for interest. This will be done in, I believe, in two years, yes, in two years, so this payment will be disappearing in two years.
Was that in the check register?
It's in the bills payable.
Bills payable.
Or bills payable, I mean.
Yes. Yep, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. So, do we have motion of support?
Yep.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, under seven, under new business, purchase of security cameras for the Clay Township PD, the police. Did you get that, Crystal?
Body cameras, right.
No.
No, security cameras?
Yep, just security cameras. And that'll be number seven, under new business. That's a motion, do I have support?
Support.
Here we have support, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have public comments, we have any public comments? Okay, I don't see any, I see a lot of public, but no comments, so. Alright, no public comments? Moving right along. Consent agenda, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the board meeting minutes of September 5th, 2017, and synopsis, check reports, August assessing report, building and zoning, lease. There were no notices, and there was a communication of police department resignation, R. Roberts.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion or anything on that? Any of those items? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone pose? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have the supervisor's report. Let's see. We're starting, actually, I'm starting the right granting process for replacing the Flamingo Bridge. We did the Merrill Street Bridge not too long ago, and I was trying to get the Flamingo Bridge done the same year or the year after, but it got bumped out, so we're renewing the grant process for that. And it does have a little bit of different issues far as construction on that bridge, but I think it's going to score pretty high, and we're talking to the road commission, we're pretty confident we're going to get the funds to do it. It's probably going to be in year 19. Could sneak in in under 18, but probably be in year 19. But the construction difficulty, Merrill Street is a cement bridge, and they were able to cut it in half, and keep half open while they built the new bridge on half, and then tore down the old half, and then finished the construction of the bridge. Flamingo, it's all wood, and you can't really cut a wood bridge in half. So actually, I've been in contact with the US Army Corps of Engineers and the Army, the CBs, about possibly bringing in a temporary bridge. They float them in on a barge, truck them in, splash them in, and doing a, I'm hoping that they'll do it as a training exercise, and we'll use that as a temporary bridge to get across to Flamingo during the construction of that. So, they did something similar down at the end of the middle channel on Harson's Island, about 20 years ago.
Oh, yeah.
And they actually, they actually posted a sentry and had guards there, everything else. So, we might be guarding that road with some Army guys, I don't know. But it was, it was interesting. Speaking of roads too, I don't know if anyone noticed it, the school zone at the high school slash junior high, it was 35 miles an hour, it got lowered down to 25 miles an hour. Reason being, school zones typically for high school are 35, but now we have six through eight grades there, and because of that, it's lowered down to seven?
Seven.
Okay. It got lowered to 25, so I just wanted to make a note on that. And we are still attempting to get the speed limit lowered on Falkirk from 50 to 35. Not sure if we're going to be able to do that, I put the requests in, and we're going to have to give them some data. Oddly enough, if you see people driving 55 on that road, that's not, that's not good for our case when we put the thing out. Well, everyone driving 35. And then they're, they're actually more, more apt to, to lower the speed limit. So, they don't want us to use the, a lower speed limit for writing tickets or whatever. I'm not sure what the thinking is behind it. My feeling is it's going to be all houses, more people are going to be walking their dogs and riding their bikes. It should be lowered. So, we are starting our audit, September 25th, auditors are coming in here, so I'm sure we'll be quite busy for that. It's going to be that week and another week in October, isn't it?
Yes.
We did receive all the kitchen equipment for the concession stand, getting it in place, and hoping to have the health department in soon to give us the okay on their blessings to serve food and fun stuff, nachos and stuff, so. This last week, we, I hosted a Friends of the St. Clair River meeting here, and what they did, they reviewed all the St. Clair River projects from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, EPA projects, and gave updates on them all. And we, afterwards, we did a tour of the Crispin Drain, and we did see one little patch of fragmites growing. It's actually the, the bridge over across M-154, past the schoolhouse grill. It's on the west side, northwest side, there's a little patch of fragmites. I talked to a couple of people in our Fragmites Advisory Board, they're going to take care of that for us. Other than that, it's, it looks really good. There is an ecological crew right now doing some monitoring on the, on the plant lives and, and the vertebrae life in the drain right now, and, and fish. And also, they started today doing some construction work on Horvath Farm where a lot of the spoils are. And that crew, I talked to them today, they'll probably be there for about two, three weeks. We are looking for, aggressively looking for a kayak launch site over there, and hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to have some good news on that. It was tax week here in the office, everyone's taxes were due last week, Thursday, and I just want to mention the staff is really busy collecting all the taxes for everybody. I mean, I give Kristy and your crew kudos, I mean, they're processing a lot of money every day for the week, and it's not our money, it's not the township money, it's all school and county. But, you know, we did collect a lot of money, and they were very busy, and they did it well. I just wanted to make a quick note, too. I was part of a, and it was an honor actually for me to be part of a, it was a 9/11 ceremony. It was actually held Sunday at night, the September 10th, at the Elgnack Park, where the first responders monument. And it was a ceremony recognizing all the first responders there, and it was, it was a very nice ceremony, I just wanted to mention that. And also, we did a really cool event last week, the Safety Tikes, and I'll let the trustees explain on that later on if they want. Upcoming events, our Consumer Education Series on Harson's Island at Reader's Cove, I think it's the last one, coming October 17th, and it's on investment fraud, starts at 7 o'clock. I'm going to stop right there, get the caller out now. Equifax had a big problem, and a lot of people's information got out, how many, it was like 140 million people. If you, you can go on a website, Equifax Security 2017, put in your information there, and they will tell you if your information is compromised. And if it is, which mine was, I actually ordered all new credit cards and bank cards. So, that's what I did myself, I'm not telling everyone what to do, but it's equifaxsecurity2017.com. If you have a problem getting to that, let me know, I'll send you the link. We have yoga, six weeks class starting tomorrow, September 16th, or 19th, I'm sorry, 6:30 to 7:30 PM at the Millside Elementary. It's $45 per person, or if you want to pop in for one class, it's 10 bucks, and that's every Tuesday at 6:30 at Millside, starting tomorrow. And then we have the Zuma Fitness Class, it's also a six-week class, starting Wednesday, September 20th, coming up. And that's also at Millside, costs for six weeks is $42 per person, or if drop-in rate is $10. And the Zuma includes salsa, meringue, cha-cha, hip-hop, and belly dancing. I want to see you belly dancing, Jack. No, I don't. North Channel Sturgeon Fishing Classic is, is coming weekend, Friday, September 22nd, is their captain's dinner. It's at the Pearl Beach Lions Hall, the cost is $20 per person, it starts at 6 o'clock. And then the fishing tournament, the Sturgeon Fishing Tournament is Saturday night, the September 23rd. It's $200 a boat to get in, I think that we had, we're up to about 25 boats right now, we're up, last year we had 20. They do have room for about three or four more, and this is pretty cool. It's the only sturgeon fishing contests that I know of in the Great Lakes, who knows? It's, it's pretty cool, and it's getting bigger and bigger every year. Also did want to mention the Harson's Island Sportsman Swap Meet and Mallards in the Marsh Duck Calling Contest is September 30th, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Brown's Field on Harson's Island, right across from the ferry. They're going to also not only have the swap meet and the duck calling contest, they're going to have hunter-dog retriever demos, there's a Dave Bullman, he's out, he's an outdoor artist, he's supposed to be pretty special. He's going to have his artwork there, then you'll be able to meet the local DNR people. There'll be hunter, hunting vendors there, also food and drinks available. And then, October 28th is our Second Annual World, International and World Famous Scarecrow Festival. It's going to be right here at the Clay Township Park, right next door to us. This event is great, it's one of my favorite, and it's going to get bigger and bigger every year. We're already getting some sponsors for it, the DDA helped us out with it. We're going to have a scarecrow contest, four categories, I think, there's going to be individuals, businesses, help me out.
Robotics?
Robotics. Mechanical, and then, um, public service. Muskrat All Sports. Anyhow, so, it's going to be good, and we have flyers on that, and then we're going to have Make Your Own Scarecrow. We have a bunch of kids games, we have a pet dress-up contest, is that right? And we're going to have a great DJ and some, and more stuff going on, so. Any questions on that, contact Cindy, the building department, 794-9303, extension 147, or just get ahold of the building department, or if you go on Facebook, like Parks, Clay Township Parks and Rec. So, all that info is there too, so. That's my supervisor's report.
Not bad.
Not bad. I did go off on a little tangent, but I thought it was important. Alright, we don't have any unfinished business, new business. We have people from Berman Flowers here for a benefit review, and I'd like to recognize Jack, and, and good to see you, Jack.
Thank you, Artie. Thank you, Artie, and Cindy, I've been talking with Artie and Cindy over the last couple of years, often on, and recently about a month ago, and just kind of talking about the services that we offer at Berman Flower, maybe that you're currently not receiving from your current agent, not health insurance. At Berman Flower, we do quite a few different things, not on this here, to talk about health insurance. Jeff, who's joining me from our pension department, just he looks down the road, so I say nothing else, so, I'm just going to watch me, but appreciate him coming.
Sorry, Jack.
Going through this presentation here. We were talking about, when I was talking with Cindy and Artie, there's a lot of things I've seen that maybe the employees were having some difficulties, are not 100% happy with HAP Health Insurance Plan itself, HAP bought the previous carrier Health Plus, and it seems like there may be some problems with HAP. Current agent maybe not receiving some timely phone calls back and some timely correspondence back as well. And also, the debit cards as part of the health savings account with Basic. So, those are all some things that we'll kind of talk about as I go through the presentation. Even when it's a presentation like this, on my side of business, on the health insurance, what I call employee benefits, what's kind of nice, what I feel is kind of nice, is all the agents out there, we have the exact same plans and the exact same brains. So, Jeff is up here talking about pension, you'll be talking about different returns, different cost of the plan, different administration, but whether it's Blue Cross from Shield or HAP, we all have the exact same cost, we all have the exact same plans. So, if you're made the agent, your plan's not going to change, your prices are going to change. I've always been very upfront with my clients about compensation. Built into the compensation is a commission that's being paid to your current agent, or this get paid to us. It's usually around the 12%, 14%. So, that's just what's included. We could talk about the current, you know, kind of page two. I won't go through a lot of this, and hopefully, you're familiar with Berman Flower. We're one of the, if not the, top writer of townships in Michigan, so we do a lot of township business. I personally do a lot with the health insurance. I think one of our biggest advantages is we're a third-party administrator as well as an agent, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. We're in eight offices in four different states, and over 98% are pre-townships, so we really don't lose too many clients. Last year, I didn't lose any, I think the year prior, we lost one, the year prior to that, we had a house side, and we have over 100 townships in Michigan. On page three, this kind of talks about what Berman Flowers, I would have mentioned, we do do a lot of townships. We support the Michigan Township Association. If you've gone to the different meetings that they have, the new convention, you know, we're a platinum sponsor. What that means to you is we're pushing for townships. I remember a couple of years ago, that when the governor came in, they were kind of looking counties, and could counties take over what townships are doing, and could, would that be a better source? We're behind the townships, we're supporting financially as well, trying to make sure that townships are, and people see the courts and townships. On page four, this kind of goes through the Michigan Township Association, I've written articles for that. I know Joanne, Cindy, and Artie, I remember you guys were up there, and, you know, this year was in Lansing, in March, it's usually in January, but I do a presentation every year on the Fort Worth Act, there's something going on with healthcare. This year, we had it for Trump Care, but then that kind of fell through, so, the last minute kind of changes on that. But what we're keeping up to process, and we have to keep up to date. As I mentioned earlier, when we get to page five, really the things that are differentiating ourselves from any other agent, because we do have the same price, we do have the same products, is what are the services that we offer. So, on page five, we talk about some of the Michigan laws. Public Act 106, I'll just go through that briefly, it's missed a lot, just to say that last year would have been a compliance year, and last year, you should have had, quote, "one" in the name of the voluntary employee benefit association. If you didn't have that, you didn't comply with the law, you wouldn't be alone, a lot of townships miss that. We have put together a VVA, it's been approved by the IRS, so we make sure that you comply with that every three years, put together for you. Honestly, it's not competitive right now, we hope it to be competitive, but it does comply with the law. Michigan Public Act 152, I believe right now you're opting out of that.
Yep.
That would be something you have to do every, you know, before the renewal.
December.
You have to continue to take a bow and knock out of it. I'll spend a lot of time on it except for, you know, page six, if there's ever looking at, maybe not opting out, we do do analysis by each plan, to see which one's better, maybe better for the employees. If the hard cap, which changes every year 20%, so, we wouldn't be including it in your plan per se, because you would probably be opting out, but if there's ever a future though, we do look at each plan and do an analysis on that. And I won't spend a lot of time on that either, because I don't, I guess, want to see the lines. But we did, we did investigate, and it's not really in here because it's a brand-new thing, but we've invested a lot, significantly amount of money in the proposal system. So, it's kind of an interactive system, with you more, for Cindy and Artie, that's going through, like in your health savings accounts. Before we talk about, okay, is if we're going to fund a certain amount, or what it might be, and if there's a change, I will go back to my staff, I have to do the change, I'll send it to you the next day. It's something that we can do real-time right there. So, you can say, well, what happens if we, employees pay 9% instead of 10%? We'll put it right in there, what happens if we do that, this HSA fund? So, it's a brand-new proposal system, we just put a place, and it'll be a lot. On page seven, probably our biggest advantages, I mentioned earlier, is we're, we're often an agent, and we're also a third-party administrator, it's called the EPA. So, you do have a couple of services that are being offered right now, that you're being charged for, that we have provided at no cost. We provide them for all of our township clients. So, right now, you have a health savings account, and I mentioned with Basic, it sounds like there's some problems with the administration, maybe there's some problems with the debit card. We could take that over, we administer it, we're not using an outside vendor, so if you have problems, we're not calling, you know, we're not one of 100 or 500 agents calling in, we're working with our own people at Calum Zoo. So, the health savings accounts, we take over, we issue debit cards, there's no cost for that. Right now, you're paying $3.95 per employee per month. At the end, it kind of summarizes all this cost, but we do that at no cost. Flexible spending accounts, we also do at no cost, so again, we give a debit card to all the employees. It's coded for everything that's approved by flexible spending accounts. With Basic, I believe you're paying $6.95, or actually, QBS, I think it's $6.95 per employee per month. Again, we charge no check cost for that. Over on page eight, I won't spend a lot of time with that, we provide that at no cost. It sounds like currently, you're providing that at no cost, but I think it was kind of hit up with that.
Yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't provisionally provided to you.
Correct.
You had somebody go out on Cobra, and then all of a sudden, it was kind of reacting instead of being proactive. You know, when we, I'm made the agent, and when I'm made the agent, I sit down with Artie, Cindy, whoever else would want to be in the meeting, and we have a list of things we go through. One of the things is going to be filling out the Cobra works, we take that over right away. I could spend two hours talking about Cobra, but in a nutshell, there's significant fines of the employees who are on. So, I'm glad you're, you have that doing now, when we take that over, but you won't ever want to be in a position that it wasn't being done for you, and now you have a situation where the employee break out, and you're kind of scrambling to try to get it back, build, and have that service provided for you. Nine, 10, Employee Communications, and we do employee communications a lot, that's one of the biggest things, that was a big issue to me. I've looked over your employee communications for the last couple of years, and while they have a lot of the information that's required, they don't have all the information that's required. So, it's kind of dispersed, you really can't see it, but, you know, I can bring it by, or email, it's copy. It's supposed to do the plan designs, there's some beginning, parts of the beginning that's required that I didn't see in years under federal law. Really, this back section is all federal law disclosures, disclosures of any company, whether it's a municipality or a private sector client, capital, private, always wants to be private. There's pretty significant fines from the Department of Labor or IRS if you're not. We're going to take that over for you. We're going to be sending, one of the other services that we just brought on is something called HR 360. It's a service that we're going to be using to utilize and make sure that we're going to do communications. We've always done email blast to our clients, but we've kind of done it in-house. The laws keep getting, becoming more and more complex where we've actually partnered out. We're paying for a service now that will be providing you guys email blast of what's going on as far as the benefits. What you need to do as an employer, we can do it for you, we will, when there's certain laws we can't, so we just have to send you the forms, say, put it on your ladder, or send it out to the employees. We also have, we have College Tool Kit, that's a website that we build for all your employees, so they could go and check their different benefits, whether it's Blue Cross from Shield, Health Alliance Plan, they could check their debit card balances, they could check their health savings account balances, all that system, kind of one source where they can start. If they want to check to see if the doctor's in that, that's the struggle. So, it's kind of one source that we don't charge for, it's not a little. Eleven is just kind of that check sheet, yeah, I was talking about when we first worked with you, to make sure that we're, we're going to have all our commitments and promises. Really, that well, I'm somewhere on that, this is something, you know, union negotiations, I, it's kind of a, maybe not the correct term, I don't really negotiate with the union, but I do do a lot of talking with the union, whether if there's a negotiation. A lot of my county road commissions I work with, they'll come at me, the union will talk about, well, if we had this plan, what would happen? What's the difference between a PPO or an ECH? What's the difference, how would this impact us if we go with this practicing? So, it's, it's more of an education part than a negotiation. On page 13, kind of summarize the savings that you have. If you're outside of Berman Flower, these services are still services that you have to provide for your employees, like you're charging the form, you're being charged for it. With us, everything's included, it's all part of that 4% that you're already paying, it would just be paid else. You look at, you know, complying with Public Act 106, we've seen people charged $500 for that. The administration of the health reimbursement account and flexible spending accounts, that's directly from the $3.95, and the $6.95, so you're paying almost $4,000 a year for that, that could be saved for the township, that you can use towards other areas in the township. Cobra, I put zero, because you're currently not paying anything for that, so I didn't, I didn't put, normally you'd put a couple hundred dollars in, but you're going to be charged, so we didn't do that. HIPAA, employee notifications, complying with state laws, almost $5,664 that we provide at no cost. Have a full team, I think that's probably the biggest thing, I know, maybe somebody on the board that, or you were that didn't know. We were the agent here, I think, about four years ago.
Four, three, four, yes.
Three, four years ago, I think the board came in and wanted to stick kind of local. I can tell you that when that happened, we had Jeanette on there, because a lot of our claims. So, people that are having a claims issue, one of your employees, if they're having a claims issue, they have to sign HIPAA release, because under federal law, they'll sign, but Jeanette fights with the insurance company and gets those paid. So, when it was leaving, I had many, many employees kind of contact us about, concerned about they were happy with the service we had, happy with the service we're providing. So, I know we've had a good relationship with the employees here. I'll kind of wrap it up with that and answer any questions, but we love to wrap this up again. Really, right now, we're kind of the time, because we want to get a jumpstart on the new deal coming up. I'm working on my Decembers, and some of my Januaries. My Decembers are kind of half done already.
At $5,600, is that an annual cost?
Yes, in annual savings. Currently paying already, with us, there's no charges for that. So, we're just kind of demonstrating with us, there's no charges outside of us who do pay.
With every other company that I ever run across, you know, they can't handle that themselves internally, and we have to go out and get a third-party administrator, and those are the costs that we pay today for the ones that we have.
I'm only, I'm only aware of probably about five other agencies in Michigan that are an agency and a third-party administrator, and we're the only ones that don't charge their clients.
Okay. Being that you're the third-party administrator, is there ever like a conflict of interest or anything, or how does that work? I mean, there's no, no issues, or?
No, there's not. There's still, you know, we have a third-party administrator, Courtney, who you worked with before in the past when we were the agent, she would still be here in contact. Courtney does all the administration as far as the flexible spending accounts, health savings accounts. I don't have access to that, it's considered private health information, so under HIPAA laws, it would be private health information. An employee wanted myself or Jeanette to get involved, if they thought something should have been paid that shouldn't, you know, she denied, then they can sign HIPAA release.
Okay.
As far as conflict of interest, we're not going to ever see that information, just Courtney.
Right.
And then only certain people at the township that you guys authorize as able to receive private health information.
I'll tell you, working with Jeanette before, she's, she's a bulldog. She gets the stuff done.
Yeah, I was.
Which one is she?
Oh, she's.
She's a, yeah, she, she does an excellent job. I always kind of describe her as a pit bull, and she does my own job, but I send my clients. I've been doing this since 1989. Prior to being an agent, I used to work with the National Insurance Company, so I kind of called on all the agents in Michigan, and I got to know most of them for 10 years. Like when I came to Berman Flower, I tried to keep those best practices, so I saw this agent was doing this good, this agent was doing this very well, let's bring them over to Berman Flower. But Jeanette is second, second to the bottom right here.
Yeah, right, I know her.
Yeah, she does a great job. If I have a claim issue, I don't try to do it myself, I send it to Jack, sign the Hepra release form. If any of you have called in with Blue Cross, it's not an act, a Blue Cross or HAP, you're going to be on your phone for half an hour, and if you talk to five different people, you're going to get five different answers. Jeanette talks to the same people every day, like 15 times a day, for 11 years, so she's built up relationships with these people. There's my times, I've said, well, let me talk, and she won't let go. Um, there's been times I've said, well, let me talk, and she won't let go. If you're not talking to them, you know, I'll, I'll take care of it.
Um, what this comes down to, if, if, I, I believe Jack is asking me, asking us if, to become our agent for our healthcare. And for that to happen, correct me if I'm wrong, I would have to sign an agent of record, record letter. And if we want to do that, I would, you know, we, we need a motion to support and pass.
So this would just be kind of a smooth transition.
Right. Right, authorizing me to sign the letter of record, or agent elect, agent of record letter.
What we do is we would send the letter, you would print it on the letter, sign it, nothing changes, none of your price changes, none of your commissions, somehow we represent it. So we do all the health services, like you're having some issues with.
Do you have anything to add for what we're doing currently versus working with them before, or?
No, I mean, there's, there's been quite a bit of issues with some of the employees. There's been some things that have been strained and not quite handled like they should have been. Um, it's been making things a little bit challenging. But I would be willing to make that motion to approve the change in agent benefit administrator from Ascend Group to Bourbon Flowers.
And authorize you me to sign the letter of rec, uh, agent of record.
Yes.
I'll support that.
Yeah, motion to support, any discussion or anything?
You guys have more familiarity with what's going on as far as the health, there's concerned, health concerns. And I never heard of any problems myself per se, but only you guys would know that. So based on the motion and your recommendation, that's all I can say.
Well, I will tell you, today was a, an actual, another great example. We had a, an employee that was trying to get ahold of them for the past week, trying to fax them, trying to call them, and the fax number was busy. No one was answering the phones. And today, when I emailed it over to somebody over there, I got a response back of, oh, hey, sorry, we've been moving for the last two weeks.
How long have they been with the township?
Um, last December.
Okay.
The, the old, or the Ascend. Basically, my, my take on it, I believe Bourbon Flowers will give us better service. It's going to save us $5,600 bucks a year on these third, third party administration costs. And, um, they, like you say, like Jack says, if we go at any agent, we can get quote from Blue Cross, from half for this. All the prices are exactly the same, doesn't matter who agent you are, it, it is what it is. So, and what's that?
Questions, it would be different, the profit liability would be different, but I would tell them.
Right, right, for health.
And what's the effective date that they would come in?
Soon as I sign it.
Yeah, they become the agent, then they start working on the renewal. So they have to be legally.
I'll leave the business portion of notification to the other company, to you guys.
Being a record, record of agent, towards Jack, he, he can go out and solicit quotes more aggressively for renewals, which will be coming up in December, so.
Quick. So you spoke of the employee communication problems you had with the agent we currently have. So what is your plan for notifying the employees that we have now of the change to contact you instead of?
Yeah, I kind of were just saying, obviously, with the best form of recommendation, we have, you know, different platforms and communication, I would assume you know the last one you did best, and we can set up a meeting pretty common, meet the people immediately, they'll be wanting to help us over there, starting effective, if we'll sign tomorrow, starting tomorrow, we'll be representing one of these issues and putting together. We have something similar to this, and we have, like that last page, it has our pictures and our, we have one that has our phone numbers, our descriptions, you know, who to contact. They can always contact me, but for claims, it's going to be Jeanette. For any new hires, terminations, cobra, it's going to be Jeanette. For benefits questions, things of that interest, we miss it.
We specialize in employee meetings as well. That's my bandage, and do an important meeting.
We do that fire renewal.
That's why he's here. He's got your back.
It does help the renewal process, for sure.
And I'm a different one, I do employee meetings. I mean, we definitely have it, we do it no matter what, because of circumstances, we have one, have it from out here and have one.
They've done them here before and they went well.
Well, I will say, I have had, had employees ask over the last couple of years, you know, can't we go back to that company we had a few years ago, which was actually back when you guys were here, so.
I said, I know we, we had several employees call and they want me to come to board meetings. I said, it's not my skill, I'm sure, but anyway, so, I didn't come, but.
So is the agent, Jack, is the agent of record, is that a termed, uh, deal?
Yeah, it's a, it's a industry term. Agent of record is, whoever's the agent of record is the current agent. So if I contact a half right now and I try to get information on your, they would not give me any information because I'm not the current agent, what we call an agent of record. With that latter, you're authorizing them to start sending us information, start on your renewal.
Until we change it again.
Yeah.
Until they receive an agent of record from somebody else. So it's good until it gets ousted.
Yeah. And that's, and you're not logged into the group, you're not logged into, you're doing the time, you know, if we're not doing the job, then, then our agent becomes a, that's one of the reasons why we have a 98% retention, hopefully we're doing the job and people.
Any penalty for pulling out of the other agency? Okay, just have to ask.
Any more questions? Can we have a motion on the floor? Can you restate that, your motion?
Uh, to approve the change in agent benefit administrator from Ascend Group to Jack Schmitz, Bourbon Flowers, Supervisor Bryson to sign for the agent of record switch.
Everyone understand that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, send me an email tomorrow.
I will, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
See you guys later. Next we have on the agenda, police body cameras. Purchased police body cameras for $14,382, Chief Coach, taken away.
Okay, well, with the body cameras, as we know, it's something pretty much inevitable, it's, it's coming across to everybody. Um, we're trying to be a little bit ahead of this. With that being said, we did get a countywide grant that we've been working on, but with this grant, there is expiration on it. So we need to have, basically, I need to work on this and have everything in place before November. Once these body cams end up coming in, they will, eventually, as I give in your letters, they're going to be replaced with a newer generation model that hasn't come out yet. We wanted to just wait until the new generation model comes out. However, the grant expires, so we couldn't. So we went back to the table with the manufacturer, manufacturer ended up agreeing that, okay, take body cameras for now, as soon as a new model comes out, we're going to take these, we'll send you the new ones, you send us the old ones back, and we're going to upgrade them and start the warranty from that date forward and no charge. Body cams, right now, I'm in the process of writing a policy on the use of the body cams. There's a lot of debate as far as that goes right now. Right now, the, from what I'm reading and what I'm being told is the governor is expected to sign new legislature on this the first of the year. So with that being said, I'm not going to do anything until the first of the year. I am going to a conference in February where this is going to be one of the topics of discussion. So with that, you're going to have legislative, some of our state legislatures there, where we can speak with them and get a little bit more information as far as what this bill's going to entail. Biggest thing is just covering ourselves and not, and with the exception of FOIA. And that's where really where all the concerns come in, is right now, basically, anything is FOIAed. So if we're walking into your home and this body cam's rolling, after we leave, somebody can FOIA this and get this video. That's the thing that we're supposed to be taking care of within this, within the new laws that they're going to pass, which are going to make certain things exempt, being things that, right for privacy, which is going to be within your home. Now, if it's something that's open to you to the public, that's going to be something that is still FOIAed. But these are all things we have to take into consideration. But what I'm looking at with this grant is, is free money that pretty much going to, as you can see with the prices of it, pay the vast majority of outfitting everybody within our agency with these body cams. We currently use our Incar video cameras. They are, they work well, but you have a lot of problems with them, like anything else, you end up having a lot of problems with them because there's a lot of moving parts that go along with them, opposed to just one single little unit. I think the body cams are going to be a good tool for us. The cameras that we have right now, I can tell you, 99.9% of the time, they end up helping, not hurting. We've had to use them many times. I mean, obviously, we know, everybody sees things differently. If you have an incident happens, you talk to five people, usually we're getting five different stories. The camera doesn't lie. Once there's a few of these things, it helps our, our, our job tremendously. But I'd like to try to get ahead of this. And I think personally, in the future, you're going to see it probably be mandated that all police agencies go to body cams. So I think we'll kind of be ahead of it, and, you know, with that, Homeland Security's going to help lift the bill and get us into these.
Good.
Any questions for Chief Coach?
Chief, how much does the grant cover of the projected expenditure?
Eleven.
Uh, a little over $11,000.
Yeah.
On what they're going to cover. What they do is they break it down through the county by FTE, which is full-time employee. And then they, they calculate that number in, divide by what the grant allotment is, and then issue on according to that to the agency that's participating within the county. And with that, we will get 14 body cams paid for, which leaves us with paying for the remaining four. So, not too bad.
So basically, the, our costs will be $14,382. The expected money we get back from the grant for these cameras will be $11,186.
Correct.
What happens with the old cameras when the new generation comes in?
Those are going to be shipped back to the manufacturer.
With rebate of some sort? Or you have to buy it again?
It's just all they're doing is they're upgrading at no charge.
Oh, okay.
Because we, because of the grant expiring, we can't wait till the new model comes out.
Okay.
So basically, to get the deal done and be able to utilize this grant, they're going to give us what they have right now because of some of the stipulations with the grant. In order to, to get anything moving forward with that grant, it's got to be tangible, things have to be recorded, documented, and all this paperwork's got to be put in through the U.S.C. grant in order to even go forward with it. So we can't just say, yeah, we bought them. They have to be in hand, serial numbers and serial numbers and all the documentation, as well as our purchase order and the payment itself has to be forwarded in order to even get the money reimbursed back to us. It's a lengthy process, I mean, we're dealing with a federal government, so there's a lot of paperwork.
And you're doing a fine job.
Thank you. I got good help.
Chief, do you feel that you have the support of the department to head towards body cams right now?
Absolutely.
Good.
And all the guys have seen, I can tell you, the assets helped us with some problems and some problem employees that are no longer here. It's helped us eliminate some problems there. And that, and I can tell you 99% of the time that when I've had a complaint come in against our officers, I go back to the videos, we sit down, watch the videos, and the complaint's done. Because the account of events that we're being told opposed to what the video is showing is completely different. So it's nice, it's just really nice to have that camera and the audio going when something like this comes in. Not to mention, like I say, it's something that, hey, if, if, if there is something that is not being done correctly, that once again helps me and my supervisors manage.
Great, thank you.
Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the police body camera purchase to be partially reimbursed by the grant. The purchase price right now is the 14,382, correct?
Yep.
Line 265, 401.
Support. Motion to support. And I, I want to mention too, this was a budgeted item, and we weren't sure at the time of the budget if we, there was going to be a grant or it was going to be available. So we budgeted as if there wasn't going to be a grant. So actually, that line item has $29,867 in that line item.
Shh.
But, well, no, it's going to be spent on other things too. But I just want to make the board aware that it is a budgeted item. So, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, thanks Mike. Uh, next we have, in the fire department, a new hire. I'd like to actually make a motion to table this for now, until we can get some more information. And that will be a, a motion.
Support.
You have a motion to support? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next we have resolution 2017-28, ordinance amendment 126-26, tax amendment to section This was, um, let me make sure I got the right one in front of me. This was concerning an old ordinance that was on the books back, I'm not sure when it was passed. Originally, it was a state of Mi, of Michigan law or ordinance or rule, or whatever it is, is concerning filling stations, gas stations, for selling alcohol. And we, we followed the state's lead on this and adopted it. Well, the state reversed it, and I'm not sure when it was, probably in the 90s somewhere or in the late 80s, saying that it's, it's okay if filling stations do sell alcohol. The township never did that. And if this was on the books, our, our planners found it and says, hey, you know, this is still on the books, we should, need to take care of that. I mean, we've been breaking our own ordinance for men, at every marina that fills gas stations or fills boats sells beer, wine. Kroger is doing it, I mean, we, we have several. And, um, so just about every place that pumps gas sells alcohol. It's not liquor, it's alcohol, period, beer, wine, whatever. And so we, the planning commission looked at it, they reworded the ordinance to take that out. They signed it up to the planning, the St. Clair County Planning Commission, they also agreed with their, their recommendation. Now, those two bodies passed it, now it comes before us. Did I summarize that right? Good job.
Sounds good, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2017-28, ordinance amendment 126-26, the tax amendment to section 2008 as recommended by planning and St. Clair County.
Support.
Okay, a motion to support. And like I said, if we were to, to enforce this ordinance, every marina deckers couldn't sell, I mean, every, every, every marina on the water, every gas station that sells beer, wine, would not be able to. So it was a bad ordinance, it was oversight, and, and so that's my own take on it. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
A motion passes. All right, next we have Resolution twenty seventeen twenty-nine, Lot Splits Within Supervisor Plots and Assessor Plots. Farah, you want to shed light on this, please?
I gave you a whole lot of stuff in your package. And I thought this was a very unique area. If you only give your letter that I have given you, the fact that we have so many supervisor's plats and assessor's plats. And supervisor and assessor plats basically originated because of the fact that what was there, what was sectioned and ran. There was crossovers, potions on people's copies, descriptions, portions in each. So the process was restricted. Supervisor that was in office at that time, they would hire a township engineer and they would recreate this area. And you'd come up with lots and new descriptions, and you could also do the assessor's plats. Well, in doing so, and Royce Gilbert was our famous supervisor that did lots of these. Anyway, in doing so, they begin to plat. And when you do a plat, then now it becomes on the Land Division Act. Well, in the Land Division Act, say you've got a forty-acre parcel, you're only going to do four splits. Well, that sort of really hems up a piece of property. And you can do a whole lot more with it based on your township ordinance. So even before I started working there, that's why I started working there, our management has started a suit because it was wrong. And it went back then, not put there before planning, and if it was wrong, it had to deny such. So they actually started a lawsuit with, it was on Mr. Zandviel, it was on Street Road, very early eighties. And it was to state that he had too many splits per his lot in a supervisor's plat. So from that point forward, we had several, we had several lots split to involve the information that I had sent to you. And a lot of judges looked at it throughout the years. They set things back to front of commerce saying, you know, Clay Township doesn't feel the supervisor and assessor's plats are part of a plat act. So they never responded back. So over the years, we had gone with our final letter from our attorneys stating the supervisor and assessor's plat will be part of the other section in the plat act, which is more like an acre distribution. And we go with, you know, so many splits every ten years and that sort of thing. So there's still other guidelines, but they're not in that, in the platting area. And our biggest reason is generally, well, I think of Mr. Petelski, for years and years of plating several areas in our township. When they do those plats, they're a plat proprietor and they have a lot and they get it recorded. Supervisor's plat isn't quite exactly like that. When you buy a lot in a plat area, you realize what you're buying. When you buy a piece of property, the description says you have forty acres and twenty acres and ten acres, you can have acres you can do something with. And it really, it stops that process of being able to split when you go through the plat act. So the fact that you've been using this letter all these years, and I was going to be retiring, we decided, and we had talked to our attorney now, that it was a good idea just to have a resolution in place that states that this is called Clay Township Reusing. And I sent our attorney all of the information and she looked at it, reviewed it, and has adopted this resolution to pass that. We still hold the same guidelines that we have since the early days. Didn't that make sense?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good, Barb.
Any questions for Barb or?
I'll make the motion.
So we're not changing any zoning here?
No, not in that. We're knowing that we have all these years based on how we split property. When you come in with a lease application and you want to split property, you may not even realize whether they're looking at a distinction that year in supervisor's plat. So you use it just as a federal agency.
And did that affect the taxes at all?
No.
Okay.
Just having the board confirm your process.
We're formalizing the process.
Okay.
Actually. Since we've got a lion's game, I'll make the motion that we accept Resolution twenty seventeen twenty-nine, Lot Splits Within Supervisor Plots and Assessor Plots.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion of support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Hilton? Or, sorry, Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have Resolution twenty seventeen thirty, Garbage and Refuge Curb Recycling and Collection Assessment Levy. And this has been on our, on our agenda before. And before we actually pass this, I kind of wanted to bring some representatives in from MTA to talk to us about it. And Gary so graciously came in. Good to see you, Gary. I'm going to beat you up a little bit.
I could beat up all day, so.
I know. But.
This is Gary Baristo and I'm with MTA.
Yeah. As you know, we've been getting a lot of complaints. I got three phone calls today, messages, that their garbage didn't get picked up for some reason or another. It's an ongoing thing. But what's really disturbing is a lot of the recycling, we're getting complaints of being mixed, co-mingled with our regular garbage. And it's happening more and more on the smaller roads. And we never had any issues until about six months ago. And all of a sudden, we're getting more and more issues. And I conveyed to Fred and, what's your boss's name, Anton?
Angelo.
Angelo. Yeah, and quite honestly, I myself haven't been happy with MTA's service. And I'll be real blunt, Gary, if it wasn't for you, I'd be looking to cancel the contract right now. But you've always taken care of us. Right, and I give you a lot of credit for that. But just to recap, I don't know, it was about three, four weeks ago, I get complaints of co-mingling recyclables in the regular garbage. I didn't call Gary, I called Fred, and it's not going to happen again. Well, the same, very next week, it happened again. This time, it was the guy on a bicycle went right up there and saw him doing it. And they know the difference between the recycle and the split truck.
Yeah, because we do have the split.
You got the, right, you got the split truck. But it was real obvious, this truck went down his road and took the regular garbage. And then they parked it at the DNR site, parking site on the island. And he rode his bike, and then the guy came with another truck, picked up all the recycling, and then from that truck, it went into the garbage truck that just picked up his stuff. So I called Fred on that, and I talked to Angelo on that. It's never going to happen again. And I told him, you know what? This is breaking the law. It's a felony. It's a felony. It's fraud that MTA is doing. And. The employees, right. I'll give you a sign. I just want to give history. And then Fred and Angelo said, it's never going to happen again, all right, we're going to correct it. Well, the very next week, it happened a third time. And these people call me, and you know what? I don't even know what to tell them. It's very frustrating. And like I've told several times, I'm really close to researching, buying our own garbage trucks and just doing it ourselves. You know, I think it'd be cool to have a garbage truck painted like a muskrat.
I'd tell them to take a picture and we'll take them to court.
The last time, your driver said, yeah, we're doing it because a broken hydraulic, well, we had a broken hydraulic line. Well, there's no hydraulic fluid around. He lied to the guy on the bike. And like I say, I called Angelo, he never got back to me. I said, I don't know what to tell these people, and no one ever gets back to me. So, but I'm glad you're here tonight.
Okay, again, that split body truck has lost a lot of calls.
Right. That's with the green, lime green back.
Yeah. My problem is, there's just no value to a driver doing that or a thrower. Because it's a single recycling truck that comes out for recycling. They don't communicate with each other. They don't call each other and say, listen, can you do me a favor and pick up that street? Because people see, they call. There are some people that just sit all day and wait for that garbage truck to come by. And when you do something, you're critical. And you know, we've got a good relationship.
Yep.
I don't think I've ever let you down. Once I become aware of a problem. My problem is, those folks don't report to me.
Right.
You know, and I know, that there would be some drivers, and we have fired some drivers. One of our short-term dilemmas is that the marketplace is such, it's hard to get
Right.
garbage sellers and drivers. But now that you've identified the issue, I will, I'll get, in fact, I'm going to meet on Wednesday. And I will again address it, and I'll stay on it until it gets resolved. Because I don't want to lose the contract.
Mm-hmm.
Most of all, I don't want to lose your confidence in me.
Right, and I appreciate that, Gary. Like I said, I really don't have any confidence in Fred and Angelo. Like we had a special pickup on the Dyke Road, it sat there for a month. After two weeks it was there, you know, it was a pile of stuff, someone moved out. You know, I called Fred, okay, it'll be done, it doesn't get done. Very next week, I called Fred and Angelo, it'll be done tomorrow. Well, it's not. Following week, I think you finally got it done. But, I mean, the supervisor should not have to be involved in a simple special pickup. And when I called, I called the office and I said, look, you know, Angelo told me it was going to be done four days ago, it didn't get done. I would like to hear from him. And he never calls. And I know that, I know, you know, he's your boss and you can't tell him the call, but he needs to know that I'm pissed.
Well, I can certainly bring it up.
Yeah, and don't say mad, say pissed off.
Pissed?
Pissed off. I'm pissed off.
Yeah, I don't have, you know, again, I'm a consultant.
Right.
I have a separate contract.
Right, you're a consultant. I get that.
What they, you know, I get paid for all these different things. And sometimes when it's critical, I'm honest with what I report to, anybody I talk to. There have been times, and I think you know, well, we got a fellow over on Marina, he's a handicapped.
Yeah, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, John Anderson.
Know him well.
So he calls me, and finally, he called, he got to me and I said, I'm going to personally come out and pick it up. I got to get this thing resolved. And then I thought after, I called him back and I said, he's an older fellow, and I figured, one bag, I could put that in my car. I said, how many? He says, I got at least three big bags.
Probably three weeks' worth.
Yeah, so, you know, I said, well, I can't come out there, but, you know, I just sent Fred a text. Did he do the following?
Mm-hmm.
So I just got to get more proactive. I'm glad that you brought this to my attention. And we'll get, we'll work on it until we get it done. But those split, those split trucks are, split body trucks, I get a lot of calls.
Right.
And I don't know how many people know this, but, yeah, when you pay for recycling, it doesn't go, and there's been a little history of some of the companies that I've actually worked for. They stepped out of, stepped out of line and did some things they shouldn't have done, went to jail. For a long time, but they did go to jail.
Right.
It's a federal, I mean, it's a felony, but it's like going seventy-one in a seventy. Nobody's going to prosecute, generally speaking, unless it's, it becomes, unless it's directed by the company to take home trucks to landfills. I mean, it's like, but MTA is a, is a very good company. It's, I've worked with five different ones, I've worked in the top. But there's been, there's been just a little slide in Clay Township. Pretty good most of the time.
Yeah.
I actually serviced thirty-two, so. We got an opportunity to pick another fifteen.
I mean, I think this, I mean, it's management issues, I believe, but, and they need to be corrected, so.
Well, he does not defend management, but he's got a lot of things on his plate. And, but there's certain things that you can't not follow up on.
Right.
Or get somebody, and he normally does. I can't believe it, he called me and said, get into this and get it done. You got to make a mention.
I would like to make mention while you're here. I did get a couple of calls last week about the pickup truck being emptied into the bigger garbage truck. Which I did explain to them is more so the case because of the smaller roads, the big truck cannot get down. So obviously, they need to go down there with a smaller truck. And the response I got back was, well, then why are they hiding? My response was, well, they're just getting off the road. I'm assuming they're in the DNR access where you talked about.
Yeah, they go, they hit the small, they're one-lane or one-and-a-half-lane roads. And it's hard to take the big truck down.
And some of those, some of those roads are hard to serve.
So I just wanted to confirm though, that that is the reason why you have the smaller truck over there? Because the bigger truck cannot get down those roads? And that eventually, they do have to dump in that bigger truck?
Especially with the Frost laws too, when they're on, is the issue, so.
Okay.
All right, well, thanks a lot, Gary. Here, want to grab this one? It's three 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 six south channel.
I'm going to get that one back tomorrow. Thank you, thank you, boss.
Thanks, Gary.
Before us is the resolution. Did anyone else have any questions for Gary or? Well, I'm sorry.
No, I don't have any questions for Gary.
Okay.
But I think, you know, not speaking for myself, you have my support on this. It's alarming to me that I believe, in my opinion, from the complaints that have been levied, that we have a management issue.
Yeah, oh yeah, it is.
And now, I'm not saying that the guys are perfect. You know, I live over on Holland, and I'm telling you what, the guys that come down my street are fantastic. They're polite, they take their time, they don't throw your stuff around, they restack your garbage cans. I mean, they're good guys, and I've talked to them many, many times. So what's alarming is that I believe this is a much larger picture. This is a management issue. And I don't know when our contract is up for renewal.
When is it?
You know what, I'll have to look. I was, I meant to, but I didn't, you know, before the meeting, but I didn't. Another thing too, I'd like to interject, he was supposed to be here at our last meeting. Well, Elginac had the, you know, it was on Tuesday, he was down at Elginac. So I talked to a couple of folks that work down there. I asked, why did you have MTA here? Exact same reasons. Missing pickups and recyclables getting mixed up with regular garbage. Exact same reasons. So, but the resolution before us isn't really to do with MTA's, you know, keep them or getting rid of them is for the special assessment for the garbage. But kind of held this over his head to get him in here.
I think deservingly so.
Yeah.
He's in a tough spot.
Yeah, he is. Like I say, I like Gary, he's done well, but he's a consultant. And if it wasn't for him, I'd be seeking, you know, we'd have to prove that they've, you know, to get out of the contract, we'd have to, it's a ninety-day out, plus we'd have to prove that they haven't been fulfilling the, you know, their services. I have a spreadsheet logged with all kinds of calls, complaints.
I don't think that would be an issue.
No.
Even our recycle bins, when we ran out of recycle bins, we called like three or four times. We had a whole two-page list of people that were on a waiting list to get a recycle bin, and they had to call everyone and tag everything so that everyone would get their bin that they were waiting for. And that was a huge hassle.
Right.
In their defense, I think everybody has two in the township by now, so.
Yeah. They're great for Christmas lights, huh? So.
Well, let's see how Fred and Angelo respond.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay? I think Gary will get that message across. Let's see how they respond.
I'll send them the video. Angelo, I'm pissed off.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen thirty, the Garbage and Refuge Curbside Recycling and Collection Assessment Levy.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have purchase of security cameras for the Police Department.
I know that garbage is bread and butter.
You've been plotting that all night, haven't you?
Yeah, that's from The Sopranos. I've been kind of trying to, Artie knows here since quite a while now, probably about two months now, kind of trying to eke along with our security system. We started having some problems with it probably in the middle of July. And that, and this is the security system that covers, the park side covers our lots, covers our holding cells, covers our booking area, and our front interview room, covers everything. The original system I installed back in, I think, was ninety-nine. And kind of been just picking it apart and fixing it here and there and everywhere. Well, it ended up, I had another issue when I came in this morning, everything was down. So I did not pick. issue when I came in this morning, everything was down, so I did not pick up anything over the weekend, and that's something that we can't have. At the point now, and I sat down far with Barbara, we've gotta do something. And the reason it got thrown out now, I don't wanna wait another two weeks, just in case we do have any kind of incident or whatsoever, it's not, it's not gonna be recorded. This is something we didn't budget for. However, one thing we had budgeted for was we were gonna replace some of our LED lighting on our old side of our building. What we decided is, we'll have to do a score goal after now, and then look at this project and get this done. And what that's gonna do, instead of putting a Band-Aid on this thing and then keep fixing it, we're gonna replace right across. And that's gonna be with new network system. So no more of the old analog system. Not to mention, it's gonna be a lot more up-to-date and very crystal clear. If we have to play anything back, it's definitely gonna be much better audio and visual with it. They say we're kinda, we're with an analog right now, analog system, which is pretty much outdated.
Antiquated, I must say.
Yes, everything's gone to the digital version of it. With this, that's what we'll do. We'll do all the installation, everything ourselves, and what we're gonna have to do is buy the equipment in order to do it. Right now, we're working on some quotes, I wasn't able to get them by the end of the day, but from what I'm seeing, it's gonna be a maximum, maximum of six grand. But that's doing the work ourselves. If we were to hire this out, it'd double.
Who in the department is familiar with installation of-
You're looking at him.
We've been doing it for quite a few years, done it for several businesses, been doing our system for years. So I pretty much keep up on it, and how the program knew it all is, as well as how things have changed from the analog to the digital, actually analog to the high-def, then to the digital.
It's a little easier today to install.
Yes, much nicer, because everything that you're doing now, you got power over ethernet, so you're running one Cat 6 cable, and that is gonna supply your power, your video, your audio, everything level one, level one system, one cable. Good thing is, you know, we already have the tools and everything that we need to do all the runs and to install the equipment.
What kind of history you gonna have on those?
As far as retention?
Yeah.
Retention, generally, with this, I wanna go with a larger hard drive with this one. Right now, we're probably depending on how busy it is, because we, I set most of the cameras to a motion. Things like our holding cells and that are constantly recording, so that there's no mistake there. But right now, we've probably got up to about a sixty-day retention. I would like to get that up to-
So you're over three-
closer to about a hundred and eighty gig.
Yeah, so you're over three twenty gig, right?
Right.
So you gotta be-
Yeah, and really, I'm gonna probably have to go up to about a four terabyte.
I would think, yeah.
The more cameras you add, obviously, the more that it takes up, especially because this is in raw video, it's not a compressed mode, so everything you see is real-time, so it just eats up the hard drive space.
On the, on the digital, as far as the motion is concerned, on recording, are you gonna be able to block out any of the, like, water or anything like that that would trip a motion detector?
Yes, yes. Actually, with everything that we're buying, this has the, they call it smart technology.
Mm-hmm.
So it actually, it knows the difference, it recognizes the difference between these things, between basically-
A rat and a person?
Or real motion.
A rat and a person?
Right.
Okay.
So.
We don't have rats, muskrats.
And, you know, and we, we have had some issues where trying to pull up videos and then, just so grainy that you can't really tell what it is. And like I say, the technology's come so far that it's, it's time. I was hoping to be able to do this this next year. I wanted to do that project then, but we're to the point right now that I'm putting Band-Aids on this, and instead of spending two grand, three grand, let's, let's just get it done and do it right.
Seventeen years old, eighteen years old, that's way-
And like I say, we keep, we keep trying to part it, and that, and it's just, it's time.
Question, Mike. Do we have to make a motion here tonight for this, or are you gonna make some kinda-
If I could interject, allow me. Out of this line item budget, we had, we originally budgeted twenty-seven thousand five hundred, and that was, the roof came out of that, and we were gonna do LED lighting and then some other stuff. But Chief, he really doesn't want to wait two weeks with the old system. He's, he's looking for a motion to allow him not to exceed six thousand dollars for the purchase of this, of this video camera system. I told him, as I put it on the agenda tonight, he was hoping to get a hard quote, but that didn't come in in his email. And so, he's pretty confident it'll be under six thousand, so I said, "Well, maybe we can do a motion, you know, not to exceed six thousand dollars."
That being said, I'll make that motion to purchase the security cameras for the total police department, whatever they need within their building and out in the parking lots, so forth, not to exceed six thousand dollars.
Support. And motion support. Any other questions?
Chief, will this eventually be able to be expanded into the park around there?
That was the one thing I was gonna bring up.
Yep, yep.
Yes, this is fully expandable, and that's one thing we had already talked about as well. There's a couple of things we've talked about. One of them is, I wanna figure out a way to get us to the other side of concession stand and the other side of the park as well. Like, right now, we've got a, what they call a pantill zoom camera that we can take, and we can look out there pretty good. I can pretty much pick up a license plate over a lakefront. But you've gotta be manning that as well. With some of the other cameras that I wanna put in, I think they're gonna be a lot crisper. Cover this end good, but we're still not getting that other side. And that's what, another thing that I'm gonna look into and find out what that's gonna take to do that in the future. Yes, we can add all that on. Another thing we've talked about and that I'm looking into right now and I'm waiting for some feedback, is trying to put something over by Pearl Beach Pier as well.
Yep.
We've got a lot of complaints over there, and it's tough to try to keep on it, monitor it. Where, we could have that thing monitored twenty-four-seven, somebody sitting in our dispatch watching it. They see something that looks like it's going on that shouldn't be, we can get a car right over there at that point, so.
Or if they're catching a lot of pick-hole, they can make the phone call.
We gotta report.
Any part of that six thousand that can't expand to Pearl Beach Pier, or that, is that gonna be a separate entity?
Well, you know, it all depends in where I can come out with this. I'm gonna try to obviously get the best bang for the buck. The company that I use, and we've been using religiously for quite a few years, and really is one of the top manufacturers out there with twenty-four-seven free support and that, so. And that comes with the life of it.
Who's the manufacturer?
It's called Full Circuit Television Proz out of Kansas.
And what, and what manufacturer are the cameras?
The cameras themselves, partly, some are their brand and others are Sony, but I, from what I gather, Sony's pretty much making them all. We only have a couple, as far as their higher-end cameras, there's really only a couple manufacturers that really do manufacture them. Everybody just kinda took, like, anything else throws their label on it. But these are, these will be cameras that will see up to, in extent, over a hundred feet in total darkness as well. So really covering our area. And that, and I'm gonna expand the coverage of the lot that's coming, in our lot over here, as well as coming over into the township lot as well.
Between fixed and PTZs, you'd be able to, especially the fixer, a lot less expensive.
Right. And, and the thing that we're gonna, I'm looking at doing right now, because the price has really come down, is your Varifocal cameras that will actually have a four X zoom. They're a stationary camera, however, they'll still be able to zoom in. So if our dispatchers see something going on, they wanna pick something up better, because I'll have it pointing towards if they're going out this way or this way, but they need to pick up a plate, they'll be able to zoom in and pick the plate up as well, which right now, we have the capability to do it.
Are we giving too much information out to all our crooks right now?
I want them knowing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Put a red light on each one of them.
Dare them, dare them.
I think-
I figure it's taking our Sunday paper?
We'll let them know that, you know, and I want people to know that our park's gonna be monitored.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna step that up to where that park's monitored.
We're gonna use any signage?
Much better than we have it now.
And the-
We're gonna use any signage?
Yeah, on YouTube.
Just under CCTV? Yeah, well, you know, I think it's pretty commonly known, I mean, as a public park, and it really is probably not a bad idea that we would put some signage up like that, that it is being monitored.
Yeah.
Obviously, we wanna keep an eye on that. I mean-
Little kids.
Anything, injury, you name it.
Absolutely.
Whatever, yeah. Good stuff.
And our dispatch does a very good job of monitoring itself. If they, they're pretty quick to catch if something's going on, that's sitting right there in front of them, so.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I've got a little bit, and I won't take long. Chief, it's my understanding that the township offices themselves are probably in need of an upgrade on their security system as well. So-
I talked about that.
That's something that, that, in my opinion, you know, I'd like to piggyback on your backup system with, with, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna start at a four terabyte, maybe we, we double that down. And if we could get some, some assistance, maybe on some installation from your techies.
Absolutely. We're talking about that, because we'd like to get something in there, especially with the girls up front, a lot of money, everything that they bring in taxes and things like that.
I think we're ready for an upgrade.
Yep.
And so as long as we, in your thought process, our board could convene on that at a later date, but as long as we have expandability and room to piggyback.
Oh yeah, absolutely. That's not gonna be our issue.
Maybe some installation assistance?
Yep. We're with you on that one, absolutely.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of the quote and information when you get it all finalized?
Oh yeah, absolutely. As soon as I-
We can email everything that's coming, I'll get it right out to everybody.
Appreciate that.
Very good. Keep it up. Good, good.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Now, that leaves us to board member comments. Who wants to start first, Sandy?
Sure, I can go first.
Sure.
I happily attended the Safety Tykes event this weekend on Saturday, and I wanna thank Cindy Babish for organizing a great event, and I look forward to organizing one next year with her, for the little guys. Additionally, I kinda wrote a thank-you letter, but I didn't wanna send it in and have it appear up there in the consent agenda, so I would like to read it. There's nothing more perfect than watching events like Safety Tykes through the eyes of a child. They do not know of any negativity, they do not know of politics, they only know by our example. I have never been more proud than I was on Saturday to see the representation from our police and fire service men and women. I was proud as a parent, I was proud as a trustee, and I was proud as a citizen. I wanna give thank-yous to Chief Rose and Chief Coach for providing the assurance, also by your example, for our departments. Thank you for giving my child the reassurance that when a call is made, we can trust the men and women coming to help them. Your officers and firefighters were patient, kind, and very happy with all the children. Thank you for representing us, and thank you for all you do.
Good. That was very good. You gotta follow that.
Tough to follow.
Good luck, Chris.
Yeah. Can I just second that?
Second that, Gomosgrats?
Chiefs, thanks to the, to the representatives you had out there. I know you had a couple officers from each side over there, and that was terrific. Congratulations to Sherry Lawton.
Yep.
She's completed her Michigan Advanced Assessing Officer training, so congratulations to her. And Gomosgrats.
I just wanna say thank you to all of our residents that came in in the past couple weeks, and thank you to our Treasury Department staff. It was, they warned me, it was gonna be busy. It was very busy, but I was really happy that everyone was pleasant, standing in line, if they had to stand for a couple minutes, and so I just wanna say thank you.
Mark?
The Planning Commission will be doing a workshop in October concerning some of the zoning issues that are on the maps. I've been working with, or asking Cindy some questions as well as Barb, so we'll roll that out and let you know exactly what date that is. You may wanna step in for the workshop.
Oh yeah.
And I'd like to thank everyone for participating on the Tykes event Saturday morning, which was really heartwarming to see. Thank you.
I'll just repeat all of that. Say second or third to Sandy's letter. And it was just a joy for me to pass out, be a part of that whole, what do you call it, Paw Patrol?
Roscoe the Clown.
I'm kinda, I'm kinda ignorant on all that. I don't watch that TV program, so I don't, they, they know everything about it, those little tykes, and they're just a pleasure and a joy to be around. And so it was, it was fun for me, yeah. And to Cindy Babish, we, we don't realize how fortunate we are to have her put together all of these activities that, that are good for the citizens of our community. And people from other communities come to a lot of our stuff, too, so it's all good, yeah.
Job well done.
Well, I've been writing, I don't have anything written down, but I will also support all the things that went across here. And I also wanna thank Trustee Burchard and Trustee Shirkey for coming out and helping us hand everything out. It was very nice you guys to come down and spend your Saturday morning. It's much appreciated, I was glad you got to see the fun that went on down there.
Learned all their names, Skye, Marshall.
And no doubt, I know, I know that Trustee Kufelt and Oregan, who were there, would have handed stuff out, but they were entertaining some little kids down there, which was nice to see.
All right, yes, I was, Safety Tykes was a great event, and like everyone said, you know, one cool thing, I, some, you know, they started getting there about a half hour early. I was talking to our grandparents, and they actually brought their grandkids down from Marysville to this event, and that's good, you know. Hopefully, they spend a little money, they, they have a good feeling about our community, and I like when that happens. It's not just all about, you know, us and Clay or Elginac surrounding areas, everyone's welcome for it. So I did wanna mention that, that's, it's nice to see. Go Muskrats, we play cross legs, right, this is coming through?
We do.
And, um, yeah, and I also wanted to congratulate Sherry Lawton. I know she works hard, she's a class-three assessor now, I think. She's fully licensed, same as Barb has. I know she was, she studied very hard all summer long, and she was nervous about it, but she did well. So kudos to her. Other than that, go Lions.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for coming, everybody. May adjourn.
You got any numbers?
Yeah, some I, my phone's in my-
Mary Ann's supposed to be opening a game with him next Sunday over at-
Twenty-one, twelve.